And the size of lots, so we did some research on that and I did a couple comparisons. I compared the first three lots on the right side of Quarry Lane. One of them has a Pleasant Street address, but I included that as three lots. It has frontage of both streets. To the first three lots on the left side of this development. And as you can see, the, they're pretty comparable. The new developments lots are slightly larger and have more frontage. And then I also compiled a list of lots in the neighborhood that were under 10,000 square feet. And there's a list in the narrative of quite a few homes and lots that range from a low of 5,400 square feet up to 9,800. And I also included the frontage for those as well. We did, also did an analysis on a couple of lots as far as lot coverage, gross floor area, and open space. And we covered the issue of elevations regarding Lot 1 and Lot 8. Garages are going to be on, inside of the development. That end will be treated as carefully architecturally as the front of the houses. And then we added screening. The applicant added screening pretty much along the entire funding properties on both sides. You know, six-foot abrevieties or whatever. Discuss it with the neighbors and see what they want. Some might prefer fences versus that, but you know, we'd obviously discuss that with them. And that's it. And we included some more information for Lot 9 in the right-of-way. And it's, we've done some research. There was some title work done on that 33-foot right-of-way by a firm. And then I took that information and we gave it to Matthew Gaines, who's an attorney and zoning it, he's a real estate and zoning attorney for a firm out of Braintree. And it was his view and I could submit a zoning letter from him that Lot 9, the owner of the Neale property basically has rights to the 33-foot access and also right to improve it. So it probably is part of the definitive application, we'll submit that zoning information. And I think that covers most of what we discussed.
Any questions from board members?
I haven't had a chance to review the plan because I've just seen it now.
Did you not get your packet on Friday?
It's attached.
Not sure enough I have. Okay, I guess my question is, is your right angle intersection long enough?
Before the curve, you mean?
Before the curve, before it hits the curve.
Long enough for a car? Is that your question?
Long enough to comply with the law.
Yeah. You've got it at a right angle, but then you've got this immediate curve. So have you looked at the length?
Does the bylaw specify that it has to be straight for 15 feet?
That's the question. I mean, the question is whether, what the, what the, what the standards are.
I think there, it doesn't specify how long that right angle is. At least I couldn't find it. I read through all the rules and regs and zoning and, but it, there is some reference to a curve and the angle of a curve, I think. So whether that comes into play or not in this situation, I'm not sure. But there, it doesn't seem to specify that you have to carry that right angle for a certain distance.
You'll be checking it with the fire chief as well?
Sure.
Just to make sure that the fire engines don't have an issue with that?
Sure.
Either entering or exiting.
Yes.
I shouldn't think it'd be a problem exiting, but you know.
I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with this. It's kind of a useless bylaw if it doesn't specify that the 90 degrees has to be for a certain distance, otherwise you could say the first two inches is 90 degrees.
So we'll find out what the.
Yeah, we carried it for 60 feet, but we couldn't find any specific area in the rules and regs or zoning, how long you're supposed to carry it for.
Other questions? If not, what I'll do is I'll open it up for public comment and then we'll come back to the board for more questions afterwards, so.
Emily? I think it asks for the, the buildable area, right? Which is, I think it's on Sheet 1, right?
Looks like it's.
But I don't know that it's labeled such.
Did you look at this page 3 in this narrative? I mean, you didn't, you didn't do all the lots, but it looks like you did.
No, I think she was looking for the envelope, the builded envelope.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it looks like to me that it's sketched in on Sheet 1, but it, you're right, it's not labeled. I'm assuming the long dotted lines.
Dotted lines in Sheet 1 are, is the building envelope, yes.
Could you label that?
Sure.
Just for the record. Actually, it says building envelope tip on Lot 3 now, I see it.
I just see it, so. Anything else? All right, so if you guys will.
Sorry, and since I didn't see that chart. Does the chart say what the square footage of buildable area is so we know what the footprint area of that is per lot in your chart?
I think a lot coverage, it's determined by the lot itself and not the, not the building envelope, at least my reading of it. And I just took two, two lots. I took a B lot in zone, that's in Zone B and a lot in Zone C. And I just, I mean, these houses are theoretically anyways, they're, they're not set in stone. We just took, we showed a footprint so the neighbors could get a sense of the. But from what I read through the zoning, that the coverage, the formula that I had put there is based on the entire lot. There's a certain percentage and it's the greater of the two. It's either, it's 20% on, it's, on B it was, I don't have it actually in front of me, I printed out the old.
Here.
It offered, you could have, it's the greater of the two, so it was like 3,350 square feet or 30%, I believe. And the 30% or the 20% is significantly larger than that.
Yeah, you have in Residence B, 20% under lot coverage, 40% under gross floor area, and in C you've got 30% under lot coverage and 50% under gross.
Right, because if you do the calculations.
And then the open space.
Percentage is much lot, gives you much more square footage.
Yep.
Then these, these house dimensions used, like, say, theoretical.
Well, they're specifically on the plans, those footprints. Yep. I used the, it's a house actually I built in town, yeah.
So when, so when you did this, the 18, 18,000 is the square foot, the square foot footprint of the house that's going on?
Yes, it's, it's the footprint that's on Lot 4 right now, yes. And it's, it's about a bludgeon houses we build in there anyways.
It's the same size as the house you're building on Lot 1 in Residence C area?
Yeah, we just took a footprint of, I just had an as-built of a foundation, so we just plotted that out just to give people a sense of the lots. Doesn't mean the width of the houses will be as wide as that, you know, I don't think they'll all be the same, so some of them would be narrower.
Any other questions? All right, so if you guys will sit back, we'll have public comments and then board members if you have questions after the public comment. So the reminder for the public testimony, wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address. Speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public entrance section. So does anybody wish to come forward? Yes ma'am, please come forward.
Hello, Catherine Caswell, 53 Pleasant Street. Just a couple of questions because I'm just seeing this for the first time. I just wanted to know how long it goes at that right angle before it meets curve? I think they, I couldn't tell if they said 60 feet or what that was. And I just was curious as to how that affected the lot sizes, assuming it came out of some of those lots. And then I'm kind of new at this, so just for my own curiosity, for like surveying, we're one of the primary abutters, I'm just curious as to, you know, where the property line falls and how that'll affect what trees stay and go and so forth.
All right, so we will ask all of the.
Thank you.
Person, please come forward.
Ryan Wall, 56 Pleasant Street. Good evening. I guess the first question I had is, will we, you know, as the neighbors, will we be able to get copies of these?
Brian, to me and then I'll ask them.
I'm sorry, thank you. Will we be able to get copies of the plans, you know, with, with the changes here? And was wondering if, I really, I guess it's the same question as was the previous speaker. What did it do to the lot sizes? It just casual look at it, doesn't look like it changed them much, but I didn't hear an address that said, hey, they went from 8,000 to 9,000 on the reverse. So that's, that would be a question. And I guess a question for the board. So what would the process be? This is still preliminary. Would that close tonight and what would the next steps be?
So I'll answer that. It will depend if they feel that there's something else that they want to bring back to us before they move into the, the actual application. We might let it go another night. If they're happy that they've heard as much as they wa, as they need before submitting a formal application, then we could close this tonight, so we'll chat within our thoughts.
And you'll address the, can we get copies?
Yes, I'll get a.
Ms. Walsh, you can hand me that for all your friends.
And in fact, Tim, are we planning on putting these on the website? Will we have the ability to do that?
We can put them on the website. I hadn't, I hadn't planned on doing that, but if you'd like, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, anybody else who has questions for this? All right, if not, if you guys will come back up, we'll have, have you address these questions. So first one, how long before that right angle meets the curve? So how long is that? How did that affect lot sizes? And the property line and where, how that affects what trees stay and go? Where does the property line fall in relation to the trees that you're looking at?
To answer the first question, it's 60 feet. Do we carry the right angle through? The second question, Lot 1 actually got larger, so the lot, Lot 2 actually got a little bit larger and Lot 8 got a little bit smaller. Wasn't a huge difference, but there was some change on.
Paul, can you grab the mic?
Sure.
Third question was where the property line falls in relation to which trees stay and go? And I know you're still working on some of that, but you may be able to.
Yeah, we have, we have all the, the trees, just about all of them, on Page 2. So we did X out some of the trees that were in obvious places, in the road, touching the houses basically. This was that area that we're going to regrade that we discussed with you. So we're going to remove those trees and you had mentioned that in mind. These are all the, the new screen that we're going to plant here, all the way to the, both the butters property line. And it shows some of the trees on Lot 4 that are going to be removed. Some of them are right in the house, some of them in the front yard, some of them directly butting the ledge. It looks like ledge 4 is the only lot that has any significant ledge on it. And then obviously there's no, no tree removals in, in the 100-foot no disturb. And in the backyard of Lot 6, the, the trees will remain, some of the ones in the front yard of Lot 7. And same in Lot 3 and Lot 2, there'll be some trees will remain. There's a very large pine tree there that I think that's going to be in the building envelope of the house. And that'll probably get removed.
So then Paul, I think you're, the next question is, where do you guys want to go from here?
Just the.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mike, thank you for the reminder. Board questions first, then we're going to ask you that.
Again, I don't know so much what the concern is, but on your survey line, you've got 0 plus 0, 0 in the middle of Pleasant Street, and you've got point of curvature 0 plus 45. So from the center of Pleasant Street to the curve, it's 45. Again, I don't know what the bylaw states, to be honest with you. From the property line to the point of curvature, it scales probably, I don't know, 24 feet or something like that. But you, you've proved it isn't 60 feet because you've got 0 plus 0, 0 and point of curvature at 0 plus 45.
So it scales what?
Well, forget about the scale. Again, if you look at drawing 3, oh, I'm sorry, 2 of 3, you've got 0 plus 0, 0 in the middle of Pleasant Street and you've got 0 plus 45 at point of curvature. So you've only got a 45-foot straight line, even from the center of Pleasant Street. Now from the property line to the point of curvature, like I said, I don't know what that scales, I think it was 20, 20 something feet maybe.
Yeah, still it's inch to 40.
I'm sorry, it's probably, yeah, probably about 29 feet maybe, something like that, 28, 29 feet on the property line to the point of curvature. But again, even from the center of Pleasant Street, it's 45 feet because you've got 0 to 0 plus 45. So I just, you know, it's not 60 feet. I mean, your drawing tells me it's not 60 feet.
That might be a detail once you revise it to blow up and make it very clear.
One thing I think we need to do is find out what, what the requirement is. And again, it would be hard to believe that there's no requirement because point looks at that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll blow that up and add that to the plans.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah, the engineer tried to look it up and he, he came up with the same conclusion that he couldn't find it. He looked through the bylaws and it said that, you know, it's a right angle, but there's no actual distance.
No, no, and I'm not trying to be overly confrontational because I don't know how significant it is, but it's not 60 feet.
The way he's saying the 60 feet is basically from where it curves back to the original point. That station.
I don't follow it, but.
For the property line between Lot 1 and 2. That's what he's saying, that's the 60 feet.
It's 60, I mean, the point, the 90 degrees is off the other street, right?
Your right index finger to the edge of the road.
From the center of this road.
Yep, to the right.
To the point of the curvature is 45 feet.
Yep, and then, yep.
What do you include, the rest of the, over here?
No, the other way.
Up here?
Right, to the right side of that.
To the right here?
Yeah, to the property line.
From, from the center of the line to the property line is probably 20 feet.
The property line between 1 and 2, Lot 1 and 2.
Property line between, but the road, the road curves before you get to the property line between 1 and 2.
It straightens out, then it curves, yeah.
No, no.
We'll, we'll blow that up so you have a better idea.
You don't have to blow it up. Your surveyor told me this is 0 plus 0, 0 and the point of curvature, meaning when he gets off straight line, is at 45, at 0 plus 45. So he's telling me it goes straight from 0 plus 0, 0 to 0 plus 45, then it hits a point of curvature, which means it curves. So there's, there's nothing to blow up, a look or see a different. Your plan is telling me that it only goes straight for 45 feet from the center of Pleasant Street.
Right. Because he, right, so we need to, we need a clarification of what, what the straightness has to be?
Yes.
If anything.
Any other questions? So Paul, how do you want to, how do you want to proceed on this? What have been your thoughts?
Well, the engineer's been working on the stormwater calculations.
Yeah.
And the plan for that, so they're, they say a week, but you know, a week turns into 2 or 3. But you know, I think it'll be ready in 10 days. It's a matter of 2 weeks at the latest, so.
So if you came back to us on the 27th?
Yeah.
I mean, do you want to keep this open as, and come back to us with the stormwater? Or are you thinking you want this closed and you're just going to come back with the final? How do you want to do, do you want our, our thoughts on the stormwater before you submit the final or the, the formal application?
Well, we wouldn't get on to the second meeting in August, right?
You can get on to the second meeting in August, yeah. Can't get on to the first.
You want to submit definitive or do you want to?
We can submit the definitive.
I think we, so the lead time on submitting a definitive for the public hearing is 2, 3 weeks or?
It's got to be advertised in 2 consecutive weeks before the meeting, so.
So it's almost 3 weeks to get that done, right? So the meetings on the 27th?
27th, yeah.
I, I think we'd probably like to go and submit the definitive for that hearing.
So close out this public hearing?
Sure.
Any board members have anything else they want before the, want to talk about before they, we close out this public hearing and they move to the definitive? If not, will you have another meeting with the neighbors before you file the definitive?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great, so.
Especially with the stormwater information, I'm sure.
That would be excellent, yeah. We'd love them to see that before you come in front of us. All right, in that case, hearing no objections. I'd accept a motion to close this public hearing on the preliminary subdivision. Do you have a second?
Second.
Paul, a favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you all very much.
Thanks.
We look forward to seeing the definitive.
People are, I was going to say, people are already leaving, but I mean, maybe explaining how the subdivision process works, just like what definitive means.
Let's leave that for another night, since they are actually already leaving. We probably should have done that at the beginning so we could explain where we're, so. So, schedule for the articles. So that's, I mean, the, the, just to review, we have the, our regularly scheduled meetings on the 13th and the 27th, and we're going to have this as an agenda item on both of them. Tim, when you do the posting for the 28th, can you add a piece at the end that the planning board will do an initial discussion? You can revise the posting if it's already posted.
It is already posted.
So if you revise, we talked about that at the last meeting and I forgot to put it on the draft agenda. So in answer, I think, to your question right before we moved on to the other, Cheryl, we'll be discussing it at the end of the 28th, on the 13th, the 27th, and obviously 11th as well. So I know for a fact that I will not be bringing the, the institutional review forward for October. I'm still going to test it at the public forum, but it's proving to be very complex as I think Alex would have predicted. So I think that's going to be in May or a next October. If anybody else knows either tonight or as of the public forum on the 28th, other articles that they know they won't be bringing forward, I still want to test them because it keeps people talking and thinking about them, but we'll know that we're not going to do that. So, so as I said, both the warrant committee and the board of selectmen were willing to be very flexible with us on this. I want to go through the public forum agenda, so it'll be introductions and what we're doing, which will be relatively brief from me. Tim, I have me doing the results of the June workshop, but if you'd be interested in doing that, that would be, and the survey, if, that would be great if you would like to do that, so.
I could do that.
Okay.
What I, because the, the survey won't technically be closed until, I mean, I mean, we, I, I forget when we said we wanted to close it, but.
August 11th, yeah.
What I, what I wanted to do was to at least sort of present what the kind of, you know, so there's 10 pictures of condos, what the top 3.
Right, just, you know, this is what we've heard so far.
Bottom 3 least favorite ones were, just so people sort of have an idea of like where we stand and, you know, because it is visual, you know, we can, we can do it that way. And then, you know, the questions, I'll, I'll visualize those somehow.
Yeah. Yeah, and just, you know, just a general, general thought. Tim's done something which is really extremely clever and we're going to do it at the other forums, which is the people who signed in, those of them who gave their addresses, he plotted on Google Earth to see, are we getting a distribution across Milton? And so he zoomed out, far enough out so that we're not showing anybody's particular address, so you know, there's no privacy issues. But what we were talking about doing it is doing that as a different color for each forum, so we can continue to measure how we're reaching people or where we're reaching people. Also, Tim has been to the farmer's market to talk to people about this and just get an idea of how to best reach people. And Julia is going to go to the Milton Public Library. They each have a little survey that they're taking, so we're checking on that. Brian, you had a question? Yeah, yeah.
And it's a rough life, I tell you. So I, I sort of, I, I know how we spread the word for the first one and then we did some different methods for the second one. It's all sort of, it's not very scientific, but I, you know, we can sort of, I think, begin to discern what are the most, and, and the survey actually also does this, where you can look and you can look at the certain dates and like, we got 130 responses on this date when it got posted to Milton neighbors, and we got 30 on this date when I posted on the town website. So it's sort of, you can, I'm trying to figure out ways to systematically do that for our, you know, other forums, short of having people like RSVP and like say like, oh, I heard about it from this.
Right.
Which we, I mean, we can do that to an extent, but just trying to really pin down, you know, where people are coming from, how they're hearing about it, and what we can do to sort of.
And we're building a database of people who respond and.
Yeah.
Give us their email addresses so that we can contact people who are interested in this directly, so going forward.
And the board can continue to talk about how to, I mean, I've just been using it. I sent out one message just basically advertising this next forum and telling people to do the survey again, but we can try to figure out different ways to kind of keep people engaged.
Yeah, sure.
Use that.
As we get closer to the school year starting again, to get into the superintendent's email blast?
Yes, although I have had mixed reviews on that during the master plan. Some people found it and saw it there and some people said, oh, but it was way down at the bottom and I had to read the whole thing. But I agree, I think it's very valuable, so and it's just one more.
Okay, and then the other suggestion is to post flyers at the library and at the senior center, because there's a population that's not on social media as much.
Good, good move, yeah.
So, you know, maybe we'll catch that population there. I know we held the first one at Fuller Village, which is good for that age bracket maybe, but I think those 2 other locations would be good as well.
So, yes, and then I want to finish the agenda so we all know what we're doing on Tuesday.
Right, but to the point of the agenda, you know, the other 2 things I would love to see us do, and maybe, maybe the first one's been done, but neighborhood associations, distribution of the presidents and have them circulated out to the neighborhoods.
So I would encourage any neighborhood association people that are watching on TV right now to submit their contact information to the selectmen's office. I did, I did submit both, for both forums. Some associations have a contact with email, some just have a mailing address. I got a lot of return to senders on those, so that list is not as up to date as it could be. So if you, and if any of you are in neighborhood associations, just make sure that you, you have the selectmen's ear on that, because we'll use that and.
Yeah.
I actually think they just posted the, posted the list to Milton neighbors too.
Oh.
I live in Milton, so I know.
I will try to find it for you.
That'd be good.
Sorry, one more?
Yes, one more.
I'd love to get, I'd love to have people around the table think of ambassadors, to have them push to, push to their first quick pages.
Oh, that's a great idea, yeah.
I won't name any names on television, but I have a few that I can think of and I'm sure that if we think about the people who stand up at town meeting and suggest that they weren't well-informed, those might be some of the best ambassadors we can target.
Also, if anybody has personal email lists, sending out a reminder this weekend would be a, a good idea. So obviously to people on your personal email list who live in Milton, because I suspect other towns won't be, won't be as interested, but that's a good point. So after Tim's done a quick presentation of the results of the June workshop and survey, as far as we've gotten, we're going to each have about 10 minutes to present the critical topics for our various zoning pieces. And so it's the top 5, as I said in the draft, the top 5 permissions, restrictions, or conditions that you're putting on here that you want public input on. Alex will go first, then Brian, then Cheryl, then I'll wrap it up and move it into the breakout sessions. We're going to do 2 breakout sessions, and it's not on this list, but each of us will run the breakout session as on the list. So Alex will do his on condominiums, great estates. Brian, you're going to do, start off with the non-conforming businesses, because I don't want the 2 condominiums during the same breakout session. Cheryl, you'll start with accessory dwelling units. I'll do signs and lighting. Then we'll move straight into the second breakout. Alex, you'll do amplified news of the non-conforming dimensions. Brian, you'll do condominiums. I'll do, Cheryl, you do inclusionary zoning, and I'll do bed and breakfast and institutional The rest are going to be assigned, so Alex, Tim is going to help you with taking notes while you run the session. Brian, Mike's going to help you. Cheryl, Bill's going to help you, and Julia, you will be helping me. So the helpers, while you're basically encouraging people to talk. So the helpers, while you're basically encouraging people to talk about, and the sessions are based on your five topics, so the, the things that you introduce to the whole crowd is what you're going to be discussing in your forum. So for me, for signs, I'll probably be talking about certain sign types. I'll be talking about how signs are lit, because we know that's a critical issue, and then a couple of other things related to signs, because I haven't done my top five topics yet either. Cheryl, you're not the only one. So think about those technical pieces that go into the zoning. And then we'll do a wrap-up, next steps, and thank you. And then I think we can probably sit down and in 15 or 20 minutes afterwards, just go through and say, yes, these are, these are still out there, and I think they may or may not be ready to go, but this one is definitely not ready to go. As I said, institutional review, I know is not going, but I still want to test it because I want to get people's ideas, so we can do a first crack then. And then, Tim will put whatever we agree is going forward, at least for now, onto the Board of Selectmen for the warrant. And then, as I said, September 11th, we'll make that final. We may make some intermediate cuts, we certainly can do, but September 11th, we'll have the public hearing and the final cuts. So, yes.
So, several of us are not lawyers.
Yes.
What is the review process going to be for the language from a legal standpoint? I, you know, this is becoming zoning law, and will it be tested against the right standards?
John Flynn is on vacation right now, but I will check with him after that, what, when he gets back. At least last I checked, he was on vacation. I may be, I may be a week or so off. I will check and see how he wants to handle that and talk about it with him.
And then, on a similar vein, ma'am?
Yeah.
Inclusionary zoning is included in some language, you know, throughout the zoning code?
Yeah.
And there's some language about accessory dwelling units in.
Yeah.
So I would think that it might be best to have those now be sort of separate sections instead of, sort of dispersed, but how that actually, you know, do you delete something and add something kind of, to make it something rather than, you know, here's this language? How do we make it into something which, to Brian's point, becomes a modified bylaw?
So if you take, let's take the sign, for example. So if you look at my draft of the sign language at the moment, it is not set up as an article yet. It is set up as everything but the beginning part, and there's one piece missing, which is, I wrote and, or drafted with the help of Wellesley, Concord, a little bit of Norwood, a very tiny bit of Hingham, and some definitions from Arlington, a draft zoning bylaw. In other words, I copied and pasted quite a bit, and then I put in our own process. So I'd like to thank those communities, especially Wellesley, which has a great one. But at any rate, it's the draft bylaw, but it doesn't have the bit where I completely strip out the Milton part. So that still has to get formalized. So I would say, if you're planning on modify, I would come up with the language first, but if you're planning on modifying, that's one thing. If you're planning on stripping it out completely, and then we can go through and add the bit where we figure out which sections we're going to delete or how we want to modify. But for now, just focus on the solid language, and then after this round, we'll talk about how to put it in proper format for the warrant. So, questions? Questions? Okay. You're good with what you're going to do? You're going to give me your five topics? Tim's going to have all the materials. Ned, I know, wanted to talk to one of the articles, at least you had mentioned that. I don't know if you want to still talk to one of the articles. If so, you're welcome to come forward, since we're discussing zoning articles.
Actually, yes. I'm very interested in the draft of the non-conforming business use overlay proposal. I know I had drafted one and shared my draft with, earlier with Alex and recently with Brian, and I know Brian's reworked some of it. I'm, have several very interested property owners who want to move forward on that, and so I'm anxious to see that the board will advance that bylaw on its own merit. If it doesn't, then I will be presenting a 10 citizens article that will essentially get it to the same point. So I think it's important that that article get to town meeting, and it's important enough where I'm preparing to advance it if it has to be.
Yeah, Brian?
Tim, you've seen the, you probably have not seen my changes since I submitted them at 8 o'clock this morning.
I did get a, I did get an email from Tim with a copy. I haven't.
I'd appreciate feedback, if possible, prior to the session on Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, whatever.
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will work to get something back to you.
And I did base some of it on what you sent to me, so I'm happy to talk about it.
That'd be good. And then, you know, as, as the process stands now, barring any decision Tuesday night after this, everything we have would go forward to be put onto the warrant, and then we would pull things off. Again, the selectmen were willing to work with us on this just this once because of the tight timeframe. But I would, I don't know if you're planning on attending Tuesday, but if you.
I do plan to attend.
But you may want to stick around for a little bit afterwards, so.
I have, and I have a client who is, so I'm going to, it will be hard, given your schedule, I've got actually interest in two bylaws for which forums are being conducted parallel to each other or at the same time, so.
There will be a public comment, ability to do public comment online, basically the same survey format we used to do the last one. We're going to set it up. Tim and I haven't discussed this in detail yet, but we are going to set it up to do comments as well. So if people have an interest in something that is side by side, we'll be able to get comments on those. So, it's an experiment, yes.
Sorry, one last suggestion.
Of course.
On the advertising, it's something I drive by on a lot of Wednesday evenings, and I'm sad that I cannot go to, but I know they have a band concert on the front lawn, and I don't know if there's announcements prior.
Ooh.
But if there are, if we could announce, those are people who are obviously caring about the community, it would be great to announce it there.
That's a great idea. It's a good time to do our little, our survey as well, so that Tim and Julia.
Create your own jingle.
There you go.
We could have a band, the planning board band. We'd have to come up with some.
I used to be the bassist in a punk rock band.
There you go.
Did you really? That's awesome. We should have a punk rock band. We'll have to think of a good name, so. All right, so it is now almost quarter to nine. Anybody have anything else for tonight's meeting? Yes, Tim?
So the, the dates for the August forum?
Oh, yes, good thing. 17th through 19th.
17th through 19th. 17th, I think, would be better, just because the Celebrate Milton folks are meeting on the 19th and.
We might want some of them at our meeting?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
So.
But I mean, if, if, if that's something for everybody, I mean.
I also understand that people have vacations and things that they want to take in August, so.
That's the week I'll be gone.
Yeah, I'll be going on the 17th and 19th. I'll be going that week.
So that's fine.